Block the plane too.
You sign this?
It just lives around the corner for me, so.
I got all those things.
Got all these?
Yep.
It is seven o'clock, Monday, December first, twenty twenty-five, and time to call the Ferrisburg City Council to order. Craig, could you call roll, please?
Mayor Carlson?
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Sias? Councilmember Murdoch?
Here.
Councilmember Kate?
Here.
Councilmember Dewitt?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Your Honor, could I make motion to excuse, uh, Mr. Sias?
Support. Motion support?
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilmember Murdoch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kate?
Yes.
Councilmember Dewitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Carlson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. If we could all rise for the invocation by Councilmember Bill Kate, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Precious God, we thank you for the gifts you give us each and every day. We even thank you for the weather, because, Lord, we know we need the moisture, and we thank you for, uh, blessing us with that. We pray for safety for all who travel tonight. We pray for special safety, your hand on all our workers that have to be out there cleaning the roads and taking care of problems. We pray, play your special blessings of safety for all of our first responders. Ask your blessings on our meeting tonight. Jesus' name.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, in the name of the citizens of America, intended to help the public, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Excuse me, Your Honor. Before we get to the agenda, there's one typo on seven I.
Okay.
It should be for a term ending January first, twenty thirty. Not twenty twenty-seven.
Very good. Thank you. So noted. Now's the time for public comments. This time on the agenda is for any citizen, direct brief comments or questions to the city council. Time for public comments will be given when the agenda item is discussed. If you have a comment or question, please position yourself in line near the wall near the podium to ensure visibility and to be recognized, and after being recognized by the mayor, please give your name and your address of residency for the record and proceed with your comment or question. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
This, yeah. Uh, Jim Menrick, eighteen nine seventy-four, North Shore Drive here in Ferrisburg. Um, first comment I have is I would like to thank Mayor Carlson for putting my appoint, or my, uh, application for zoning Board of Appeals on the, uh, agenda tonight. Second, I'm requesting the council and mayor support me in this application, and if you do appoint me, I promise I will do the best I can for the people of Ferrisburg and for the person that happens to be in front of the board. And third, um, I don't live in Florida. I'll be here for the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Seeing none, let's move on.
Yes. You can tell.
Ah, yes.
He's a smart one. She stayed home.
Very true. Uh, moving on to agenda item six, consideration for approval of the consent agenda. Uh, six A approved in November third, twenty twenty-five, and November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, city council min, meeting minutes printed. Six B approved Bill's memo in the amount of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. Uh, six C approved the schedule for the twenty twenty-six city council goals, and six D adopt ordinance three forty and ordinance to amend chapter thirty-two of the city code, section thirty-two point thirty-four, reducing the number for a quorum from five to four members for the Kitchell-Linquist-Hartford-Dunes Preserve Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and support. Any comments from anyone? None? Down there? None? Craig, go ahead.
Councilmember Murdoch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kate?
Yes.
Councilmember Dewitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Carlson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. Moving on to, uh, seven A, new business. Uh, discussion and take action if appropriate to approve a revised gas easement with Michigan Gas Utilities Corporation at William Ferry Park, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all necessary documents. Craig, you want to fill us in on this?
Yes. Last year, the city council approved, uh, easement for Michigan Gas Utilities to put the gas main in William Ferry Park to replace the gas main in there. At that time, um, they replaced the gas main inside William Ferry Park. Now, the second phase of the program is to replace the main underneath the water. So they, they're looking for a little larger easement than what they currently have. It's about six thousand square feet, uh, larger, and they're asking for a grading easement to, uh, do the work, uh, on the city property park. Uh, the, the city attorney has looked at the easement, has no concerns with the document. Public Service Supervisor Matt Schindelbeck has reviewed the location and has no concerns with, uh, enlarged easement.
Could certainly accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Support.
Any discussion from anyone? Are there any questions?
I have a question and a comment. Um, the memo from staff indicates that the prior easement dated August of twenty twenty-four, um, was a, to approve an amendment to the easement which corrected the location of the gas main. Um, I would offer that we approve this with the condition that the city received engineered stamped as-built drawings when the construction of the new main is complete.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Craig, is it, uh, reasonable?
Yes, it is.
I will amend my motion and include Mr. Cook's, uh, amendment.
Support.
Any other discussion regarding this? Seeing none, Craig.
Got it. Roll call. Councilmember Kate?
Yes.
Councilmember Dewitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilmember Murdoch?
Yes.
Mayor Carlson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. Moving on to seven B, discussion and take action if appropriate to approve amendments to the personnel manual.
So in front, in your packet was, uh, three proposed amendments to the personnel manual. Uh, the first amendment would allow, uh, a new hire to receive five days of vacation after completing their ninety-day probation period. Uh, the second amendment where, is regarding, um, uh, tobacco use in the city hall, uh, city vehicles, city buildings is prohibited in all places. And the third amendment would be, uh, drug and alcohol testing for non-CEDL holders, which would be everybody except for the, uh, Public Works Department. They're under their own program with, uh, the CDL license. So this, uh, has some, uh, criteria to, for staff to be able to use if there is a suspicion of drug or alcohol used by an employee.
Anyone have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you.
Support.
Okay.
Question, Your Honor. Um, Craig, we don't, they don't accrue vacation?
Yes, they do. From day one.
That's not what this is saying. No, it's saying that after a year, they get ten days. So that...
Right. I think that's in another paragraph of the personnel manual.
I'm sorry. Say that again.
There's no different paragraph.
So wouldn't they, after ninety, wouldn't they just be prorated vacation then?
We typically don't allow vacation for a new hire until after one year of...
Okay. So now we're gonna allow it after ninety days?
Correct. One, one week by days.
Okay.
It's, it's hard for a new employee to come in here and work a whole year without getting a vacation. They get prorated their personal days, so if they come in, they get twenty-four, employee gets twenty-four hours of personal leave a year. Someone comes in July first, we prorate that for twelve hours.
Yeah, it's, there's just not a lot of context in this snapshot, so I, I think it could be misconstrued that every year, um, each employer receives a vacation time on the following basis after completion of ninety days. I should be like, only the first ninety days, not every night. I mean, normally, there's a window of services between one year and five years. You get ten days a year.
Correct. And after the first year, they get their ten days, and if they work another half a year, they accrue that another two days of vacation.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that's how you write it.
Okay. I'm, I'm pretty sure that's in the personnel manual. I'll double check it.
This should make us competitive to with what's going on on the marketplace.
Yes.
Any other comments? Take a vote? None? Okay. Craig?
Councilmember Dewitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilmember Murdoch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kate?
Yes.
Mayor Carlson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, seven C, introduction of ordinance three forty-one, an ordinance to amend the Ferrisburg zoning ordinance, section seven point seven zero, district sign regulations, to permit ground signs for non-residential properties RG, RG, RG one, RG two, and RG three zoning districts, and to amend section seven point seven zero district sign regulations to revise the term pole sign to free standing sign consistency in the ordinance.
Your Honor, this is a long time coming.
Understood. Is that, would you make a motion?
Oh, it's just an introduction.
Oh, that's right, it's an introduction.
Yeah, it's a long time coming that we screened out some.
Yeah. Craig, you wanna film the details on this for us?
Sure. We have a business that's on North Shore Road. It's really, uh, the parcel zone in, in two different segments. Uh, the front section that's, uh, on, on the street is zone RG two. The back half is zoned, uh, light industrial. So it's a non-conforming business in, in the residential zone district. So this ordinance would allow that business to have a sign based on, uh, the zoning district standards that are listed in the table there.
Yeah, it fits, fits that area nicely.
There was a sign there previously, and it got down for repair, and now the new one has to conform, so it wasn't allowed, so this will allow it.
Is there, uh, there's not a lot of other parcels that are, um, in, uh, that this would apply to?
No, no.
Couple maybe?
RG two? I, I can't think of any off the top of my head.
Thank you. Okay, so this is just an introduction. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I have a question. Um, if we approve this at some point in time, the property owners still need to go through an application process, is that correct?
Correct. Anytime, if a sign's installed in the, uh, city, we ask for a zoning permit application, and if it's gonna be light, electrical permit application, then we view that compared to the zoning laws, make sure it complies.
A subsequent question. Is that, if it's granted, is that in perpetuity, or is it for a specific amount of time?
As long as it meets the zoning ordinance in perpetu, perpetuity. The zoning laws got changed in the future. They wouldn't allow it. It would be a non-conforming sign. It would still be continued, permitted to be continued use.
An additional question. Are there any provisions in the zoning ordinance for signs that are approved in perpetuity to be maintained?
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Um, I'm wondering if this should address the use of, uh, I don't know what proper terminology is, the electronic billboard type signs, like, you know, we have a little portion on our city sign. Um, the reason I ask this is I, I travel regularly past some, uh, a little bit north of here that are in mixed, um, commercial and residential areas, where they are so bright that they're a distraction to traffic, and I can't imagine the residential neighbors are very happy with it. And we had that same experience here when we lit up this one for the first time, and Mr. Montgomery didn't need nightlights in his home for a couple nights. So I'm wondering if this same ordinance ought to address the use of that type of signage, um, to, to, uh, limit the brightness, because I know it can be limited. We proved it ourselves. You can cut the brightness back. I wonder if this would be a good place to address that.
Um, there's a section in the zoning laws that talks about illumination of signs, uh, pers, specific verbiage. I'm not, uh, I'm not off the top of my head. I can't remember it, but I'll look into it.
You can send us an email on that, Craig.
Just like that.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else regarding the, uh, change in sign ordinances? Seeing none, let's move forward, uh, to seven D, discussion and take action if appropriate to approve, approve the mayor's appointment of Rebecca Hock to the Brownfield redevelopment authority for a term ending January first, twenty twenty-nine.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor. Do we have any support?
I'll support, so we can discuss that.
Okay. A motion and support on the floor, Your Honor, for discussion.
Yep. So we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six appointments. Have these gone before their specific boards?
Uh, the only one that has is, is Mr. Menrick for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. So i- is that something we can do? Is, I, I don't know which, I know, I know Ms. Hock is a, a reappointment, so, um, but these other ones, are they reappointments or, um, or, or new appointments?
So Ms. Hock is, is a reappointment. Uh, Tim O'Donnell is, uh, would be a new appointment. Uh, Mr. Jim Menrick was, uh, before the ZBA board, and they made a recommendation to city council to approve his application. Now, Mr. Dow for the ZBA, uh, has not been reviewed by the zoning board. And the board review typically goes right to city council without being reviewed by the board.
Can city council send these appointments, uh, to the respective boards?
To the, uh, to the Brownfield and to the Zoning Board of Appeals, yes.
Okay. And that board a review?
Typically, it goes right to city council.
Yes.
Just for the councils, uh, Rebecca is on, uh, out of Coney, board, uh, Brownfield Development, and she's state certified. And also for the board review, she is state certified. Um, we've appointed people in the past to the board review, and they never could, never did get certified, did they, Craig? Can we appoint somebody that never did get certified?
For the board review, you have to be certified by the state, yes.
Just throwing that out there.
I have an additional question. Um, I contacted staff this morning to get a copy of the bylaws for the B R A. Article four of the bylaws states that the mayor's appointment requires concurrence of full council. I asked for a clarification of that requirement, and that was pending legal council's, um, comment as of this afternoon. I don't think that question was ever answered. The specific question is whether concurrence of full council equates to a unanimous approval.
So, Mr., go ahead.
I can answer that before. City attorney did get back after five o'clock. It does require unanimous approval by city council.
Thanks. Very good. Um, what does that mean if we're missing a councilman?
I didn't answer the question.
Okay, so, um, I, I would, um, I, I know we already have a, a motion. And second on the floor for D, um, but the combination of having a couple that we don't know an answer to, and this one, uh, and, and a couple, and the ZBA not going in, uh, in, in front of their respective authorities, I would really like to, uh, table D, E, G, H, and I. And so the one we've voted on. It's already been in front of us.
So H and I was a board review?
Yeah, we're waiting on a, we need an answer on if we can vote on that without a member of council present. That what Mr. Cook was just saying?
That was the Brownfield. The board review, we do not.
Okay, so Brownfield.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I, I would still, I, I'd, I'd be okay tabling, um, until next, until we get some clarification, and we have all our council members here.
If that is a subsequent motion, then I second it.
So we, we would need to amend the original. So it's up to you if you wanna go forward or not.
Well, if, if it's, you know, we, we don't have to have all members here, but you have four of the council. You don't need all seven members, correct, Craig? Or do we?
We don't know. That's why.
I, I don't know what you're saying. You need a unanimous vote of city council. And I didn't ask if one was absent, that unanimous vote of present or unanimous vote of entire city council.
Seems to me that it would be whoever's here, but I don't know.
Yeah.
I have no objection to postponing that. I would, I would like to vote on Mr. Menrick.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I left that one specifically out. Craig, what do we need to do? From the Robert Truitt group?
So...
Can we withdraw the original motion?
Yes, we'll have to table it. Just, just, just to clarify, you still want the board review to go to the board review?
What? I, I will support it. That's something we normally do?
No, it's not. It's up to the board, to the new member to get certified by the state by the time the next board review meets. So the next board review meeting is, well, there's one in December fifteenth, oh, sixteenth. December sixteenth, and then the following one would be March, first of March.
Are we, do we have a quorum for that?
For the board review? Yes. So, uh, Ms. Kenyon, Kathy Kenyon, is currently on the board, and she's seeking reappointment, and her term expires January first of twenty twenty-six. That's correct.
All right, that would be my motion. With the exception of F.
Can we also make an exception for G since that is related to zoning board of appeals, or am I misunderstanding? Did Mr. O'Donnell receive a nomination from the ZBA?
He didn't. Interviewed Mr. O'Donnell, um, made a recommendation.
No, we, Mr. O'Donnell has not been before the zoning board.
So I'd like that to go to, I think that should go to the zoning board.
Or, or was he?
As G, discussion and take action to approve Tim O'Donnell to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate member.
But, but he hasn't gone to the ZBA. ZBA hasn't looked at that.
We located the last meeting and approved him, his appointment to the council, didn't we, Craig? I know he was before us.
We're talking about two different people. So Jim Menrick did go before the ZBA, and he did get the recommendation. The question is whether Mr. O'Donnell did the same thing.
Correct.
I think the last ZBA meeting, we made a recommendation to approve Mr. O'Donnell.
Excuse me for one minute, I'm gonna go look.
Okay.
Would you please?
With the last meeting, it had been November thirteenth?
Yes.
I have the minutes right here.
Great time. You're supposed to dance and, uh, entertain Mr. Jim.
Oh, yeah. Yes. I tried shoveling it, and I gave up. It's too heavy.
Sold the shovel.
That's what I told my guy. He's on, he came back from Sri Lanka today, so I'm like, you could go on vacation and... Oh, tell ya, yeah. I bet he came and got me out. Appreciate it.
I have it right here. It's in the minutes for October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. I'm gonna read number nine, moved by Dewitt, seconded by Lyons to recommend to city council the appointment of Tim O'Donnell to the zoning board of appeals for a term ending July first of twenty twenty-seven. Roll call, three yays, one nay. Motion passed.
We found it, Craig. Welcome back. Mr. Cook pulled it up.
October, yeah.
October sixteenth. So I think that we should leave agenda items F and G, since both of the applicants did receive nomination from their respective boards, which was the ZBA.
Right, Your Honor. Craig, is that unusual to send board of review to, do the board of review for...
It's the first time since I've been here.
So...
I know, I know Rebecca asked me to, to remind you that she is certified, um, to the state, so.
So then I'm okay, um, mandating the motion to table? E and...
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we're moving to the table?
Oh, we got vote on.
We got a vote on.
Table.
You guys are...
I know.
Come on, it's a long day. I've got three more. Let's get this, uh, moving here.
So this is the table D, E?
Yes, D and E.
Just D and, yep. Roll call vote?
Please.
Councilmember Cook?
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilmember Murdoch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kate?
Yes.
Councilmember Dewitt?
Yes.
Mayor Carlson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to, uh, seven F. Discussion and take action if appropriate to approve the appointment of Jim Menrick to the zoning board of appeals as a regular member for a term ending July first, twenty twenty-seven. Step to motion, please.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion is supported on the floor. Any comments?
I have a comment or a question. Um, is the applicant, do they have any affiliation with the Facebook site? Is the applicant, do they have any affiliation with the Facebook site, Ferrisburg Planning? Which is posting information that appears duplicative with the planning commission?
Answer your question. Oh, I know it.
Thanks for answering the question.
Your honor?
Yes.
Jim, when you interviewed before the ZBA, you indicated you'd be willing to take the county course for the planning and zoning. Okay, if you're approved, get with Craig and take care of that for us, would you please? Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? No? Okay, Craig, can you call roll, please?
Councilor Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilor Murdoch?
Yes.
Councilor Kate?
Yes.
Councilor DeWitt?
Yes.
Councilor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Carlson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Congratulations, Jim, and thank you for your service, appreciate it. Moving on to seven, seven G, discussion and take action if appropriate to approve the appointment of Tim O'Donnell to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate member for a term ending July 1st, 2027.
I'll make a motion to deny the appointment of Tim O'Donnell to the ZBA.
Support. A motion is supported on the floor, any discussion?
Tim O'Donnell filed an ethics complaint today against one of the people up here. I won't say who it was or what it was before. The timing of that complaint and the subsequent withdrawal the same day seems a little strange. I would like to ask Mr. O'Donnell questions about that. He's not here tonight. So for those reasons, I, I just feel like it could potentially be problematic. One thing I was thinking of today when I got the ethics complaint and I read it was it creates an atmosphere where I believe the complaint and the subsequent withdrawal seeks to influence potentially the board's approval or disapproval. And I don't feel comfortable moving forward with the appointment for that reason.
Any other comments? Hearing none, Craig?
Motion to deny, roll call. Councilor Murdoch?
Yes.
Councilor Kate?
Yes.
Councilor DeWitt?
Yes.
Councilor Cook?
Yes.
Councilor Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Carlson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. Moving on to seven H, discussion and take action if appropriate to approve the appointment of Kathy Kenyon board of review as a regular member for the term ending January 1st, 2029.
I will make that motion to approve.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion is supported on the floor, any discussion regarding this? Hearing none, Craig?
Councilor Kate?
Yes.
Councilor DeWitt?
Yes.
Councilor Cook?
Yes.
Councilor Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilor Murdoch?
Yes.
Mayor Carlson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. Moving on to seven I, discussion and take action if appropriate to approve an appointment of Rebecca Hop board of review as an alternate member for a term ending January 1st, 2030.
I make a motion to approve Rebecca Hop's appointment as an alternate member for the board of review with a term ending January 1st of 2030.
Support. Motion is supported, any discussion?
Your honor, why is this term so much shorter?
I'm sorry?
Actually, it's supposed to be 2030.
Like 23, three-year term.
Craig updated that during the cycle, not at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. So 2030, not 27?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Hearing none, Craig?
Councilor DeWitt?
Yes.
Councilor Cook?
Yes.
Councilor Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilor Murdoch?
Yes.
Councilor Kate?
Yes.
Mayor Carlson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number eight, public comments. Public comments.
Excuse me, your honor?
Yes.
We have one more, item J.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Seven G, discussion and take action if appropriate to schedule a work session, regular agenda item, on December 15th, 2025. Yes.
2026 goals? Do we put that on the agenda?
Yep.
Yep. Do you have anything else for works?
Your honor, I'd like to, it doesn't need to be December, but I would like to explore some of Dave's ideas on ethics process.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, we don't, I didn't quite catch what you wanted on ethics?
Dave just asked to revisit it at some point, it doesn't have to be December, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't quite hear you.
Yep.
I'm not, I'm not too good at hearing on one ear.
I can share them publicly, right now there's two thoughts. The first thought is, there's a problem, I believe, with the form. It says at the top of the form that ethics ordinance cannot be heard, or complaints cannot be heard against the mayor or sitting members of council. I don't know if it says that exactly or not. The other problem I feel we have with the ethics ordinance is it states that if there is a finding of unethical behavior, the ordinance gives the power to the city attorney under city charter, chapter 4.28, to discipline and or potentially remove the person who was found to be unethical. After reading that chapter, I don't believe the city charter gives the city's attorney any authority to remove an elected official. And that's what most of the ethics ordinances, most of the complaints are against elected people. So even if we agree as a council to forward a complaint regarding one of us or the mayor to our attorney, even if the attorney finds there to be grounds for unethical behavior, my question is, it doesn't seem like there's any authority for the attorney to do anything about it. We're elected persons, we have to be removed through a pretty clear legal process that's set in state statute. So those two things I'd like to have a more deeper conversation about as well as the utility of the ordinance in general, just based on how the implementation and how the changes have either not or caused changes from what, you know, we've gotten in the past.
Understood. Okay, very good, anyone else for anything to add to the work session? Your honor? Yes.
Craig, could you have, don't, don't, don't have Brooke waste a lot of time on it, but just have him give us a quick opinion on Mr. Cook's points?
Yep.
Thank you.
Excuse me, your honor. There was another couple items that I suggested for work session, the city hall rent and leases that can wait until January. I want to have a quick conversation about the 4th of July fireworks for 2026, it'll be kind of short.
But we'll put that on for the fireworks will be on for this next work session.
Please.
But not the rent.
Correct.
That'll be January.
Yes.
Sounds good? Everyone satisfied with that? Moving on to public comments, do we have any additional public comments this evening? Mr. Menrick?
Jim Menrick, 18, 974 North Shore. I would like to thank council and mayor for my appointment to the zoning board of appeals. Like I mentioned earlier, I will do my best to represent the city and be fair to the person in front of us and I'll get with Craig as far as training appropriate. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Very good. City manager report?
No report.
Come on, it's snowing out there, Craig, one of the clouds is gonna be out.
Four o'clock in the morning.
Four o'clock, oh boy. Hey, city council members?
No.
No report?
No report.
No reports.
Okay.
I have two items, I've been contacted by residents recently regarding view obstruction on the corner of 168th and West Spring Lake Road. I don't have the specifics with me right now, as well as an increase in speeding on 168th as well as West Spring Lake Road. The speeding is happening allegedly in the city of Ferrisburg and the specific resident request was, what is being done to mitigate speeding? My response is I would bring it up during tonight's meeting and that the city council and staff have the authority and the power through our contract with the sheriff's office to potentially increase patrolling in the area. But I didn't know whether any further action's been taken in those areas.
I reviewed the sheriff's department to make sure they patrol that, they, during the summer, they were patrolling after the street got repaved. And the comments from the department at that time was that they were not catching anybody really speeding on the street. We did talk to a traffic engineer about doing a traffic, a speed study out there and the concern was that when you do a speed study, there might be consequences instead of lowering the speed limit, that the study would show that the speed would need to be increased.
I know I've chatted with law enforcement a little bit regarding 168th and they didn't seem to, didn't, the opinion was it didn't seem that there was that much speeding when traffic is heading out of town, heading north. But coming south, people are heading down from, let's say, the mall and then all of a sudden they're in 35 mile an hour residential district, coming from 45. And it seems like most of the traffic that was south, so it suggested to be, hey, why don't we have a speed sensing sign like what we have in a couple other spots?
We can look into that, sure.
On the south side. Is the sheriff's department, are they redoubling efforts out there like they are on North Shore? And if they're not, can we?
Yes.
Your honor?
Yes.
The sheriff's department recommended we trim this tree back so that people could see the speed limit sign on 168th just south, or yeah, just south of Van Wagner. And they, according to the sheriff that delivers my package, that seems to have helped. So I don't, if it's coming from the mall, it's 55, they stop at the stop sign, they couldn't read the speed limit sign, so. I don't know if there's anything else we can do other than just increase a few patrols in there. And people will not fight by the law if they don't want to. Right, Bill?
Yep.
Very true. Does that end the report, David?
End of report.
Okay, very good.
Don't forget about our holiday party on the 12th, right, Craig?
Correct.
Five forty. Be there, be square. And on Saturday is our carol sing at 6 o'clock at William Ferry Park. Come and us, singing and hot chocolate and donuts.
Santa?
Santa on the fire truck and a bonfire and lighting the tree and lots of stuff. End of report. I'll be there.
Well, it's fun to be able to go and enjoy that and all, everything put together so nicely. Fantastic. Mayor doesn't have any report?
Oh, it's due adjournment.
Okay.